Welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the Shafter's Select Board on Monday, February ninth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty. Another snowy night out there. I hope, I'm glad to see everyone was able to make it. Ken is not going to be able to be with us tonight. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening? No?
I don't have a conflict of interest, but I have done work with one of the electricians, or one of the electrician has done work for me on my house.
Okay. That does not disqualify you, or require recusal, I don't believe. It's a relevant disclosure. Approval of minutes. Did everyone see the minutes for February second?
I was wondering if I could ask, hold those till next meeting, because I haven't reviewed them.
Without objection? They have been, the unapproved minutes have been posted as required by the new open meetings law. Warrants. Check warrant number sixteen in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred, ninety-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. I move we approve?
Second.
Second by Mitch. Items over a thousand dollars are salt. Salt, 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 and salt. Seventeen hundred dollars a piece on each one of those. Green Mountain Powers got one for twelve hundred. Tam has one for sixty-three fifty. And Daly has one for sixty-four twenty-two. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved four zero zero. Is it just the one, or are there more? Oh, here's another. I have a retirement warrant number sixteen in the amount of a hundred and ten dollars and sixty-three cents. I move we approve?
Second.
Second by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Payroll warrant number sixteen in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred, sixty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. I move we approve?
Second.
Second by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Payroll warrant number fifteen in the amount of a hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents. I move we approve?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. And payroll warrant number fifteen in the amount of nineteen thousand and eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. I move we approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. All right, announcements. We were scheduled last week to announce expiring positions on the planning commission and DRB. We did that. This week we are announcing that we have received letters of intent from Chris Canessi, Tom Honcharik, and Michael Day for the DRB. And on the planning commission, we have one vacant and one expiring position. We have received no letters of intent for those. In other other positions, the commissioner to the BRCRC, we've received a letter of intent from Bill Pennabaker for emergency management coordinator. Received a letter of intent from Jerry Madison, energy coordinator Ben Hewlett, town health officer Tim Scoggins, and tree warden Jim White. We have extended the deadline for people to submit letters of support in favor of these candidates or other candidates. That deadline has extended. A couple of weeks ago is next week, February sixteen. Oliver, did you raise your hand? I thought I saw somebody raise their hand. No? I guess so. Any other announcements?
I'd just like to tell the town that I will not be here for town meeting day. I worked with the select board for the budget. We all had a few differences, but overall I think it's a good budget and ought be passed. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mitch.
I have an announcement from the request from the road crew and a reminder to everyone that vehicles cannot be blocking the right of way during snow plowing operations. They can be removed at any time by the town. And also a reminder, they're running into people who are plowing snow and leaving piles in the road. That is against state law also, so we're really just asking your cooperation in getting your cars off the right of ways. And please don't plow your snow and leave it in the roadway.
Guess we'll plow it right back into you again.
Yes, we'll plow it.
Our plows bigger than your plows.
That's right. No other announcements?
Yeah, one more.
Um, Judy's going to be holding a ladies clinic at the Buck Hill Firehouse on Valentine's Day, this Saturday, um, February fourteenth. And I'm not sure of the hours, but the information's on our website.
Oh, Saturday's Valentine's Day. I of course knew that.
Right that time.
I was calling FDU.
Any other announcements? An important member of the Shafter's community passed away recently, Ed Colvin, and I believe Art, I was going to see if you would say a few words for us about, about Ed. I believe you knew him pretty well.
I didn't know him personally, but I just know that Ed Colvin was probably somebody that was the driving force behind Howard Park. Not only in the vision of it, but also helping to get funds for it and all that sort of stuff. I can remember Ed Colvin at town meetings. They were always quite lively when Ed was there, but Ed's always, always had the town in mind. I mean, his, whatever he stood for or something else was for the good and the betterment of the town. But he certainly was a man that had Shafter's in his heart and is going to be missed for what it means.
Yeah, I did attend his funeral a week or so ago, and it was a really nice service. And in particular, his son Bill gave some very heartwarming words about his dad. And I learned about Ed Colvin not just as a member of the Shafter's political community, but as a, as a person and a father. It was, it was very nice. Public comments. Dave Mans.
Just here to voice my support for your agenda items regarding purchasing the property. I think it's a wonderful idea to try to bring that little piece next to the dam for the site into town ownership. Hope that if you get that, you'll be able to really study how that may help with plans, not only for immediate future, but longer term with town barrage and everything else. That would just leave one more little piece up there. So I'm just voicing my support for that. Also will throw in that I think the area behind the current town barrage would be good if the town owned that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and I invite you, if you like, when that comes up on the agenda, if you want to say more about it, you're invited to.
I would like to make a comment as a member of the public.
Oh, you're, I invite you to stay here.
As a, Sluggman and I voted for having the coal spring thing put on the agenda, but also as a person that gets their water from there and as a person that has water rights to that, I think it's important that whoever does that gets in contact with all the people that have water rights there, because water, water rights are legal, legal thing and and they should be informed of what's going on and all that. And there's, there are a lot of people. I know at one time there was over eight or nine people right around that area that had it, and I don't know how many more have rights to it by the pipeline going through all the properties and all that sort of stuff, so.
Okay.
I just hope that, that all the, all the young people are involved in it, that's all. Okay?
Yeah, and although I haven't called them out in particular, I have been in contact with a lot of the people that do use the water. You are certainly aware of it. The Hamiltons who live on the corner, who, where the property, where the coal spring is, they get their water from there.
A lot of it's in the right of way of the town, too.
Yeah, a lot of it is in the right of way of the town, but they're, they abut that right of way.
Absolutely.
They're aware of it and on board with it. They're partners on the project. And the Department Color House Association, they, they're at the end of the, of the line. They're also on board with it.
I can probably get you the names of some of the other people that I know that have water rights to it. Okay?
Okay, good. Joe McGovern. I've talked to Joe McGovern, too.
Did you say water rights? I mean, do they have pipes going to there now? Do they get their water directly from there?
They have pipe, they may have pipes there or they may not be active, but they have in their deed. Would you explain that? Dave, I mean, if it's in the deed, you have a legal right for water at any time.
Even though you're not using it, your rights are not, the fact that you drilled the well does not terminate your right to use it in the future. It's a fascinating line, because it's clay wine that ran from that spring all the way to the color house. Still follow it as it goes across some of the gullies and it can fill then the water line is still there. The last I moved it, still carry well.
It still, that fills the pond down in Color House, so.
Yeah. Joe McGovern has the, the, a copy of the original survey for the line. He and I were looking at that recently, and if I can find somebody to, with a big enough scanner, I intend to, to scan it and overlay it on a map, and we can start looking at exactly where it goes. I know it runs through mine, yeah. Probably does. Okay, that's all. All right. All right. I don't see a treasure for treasures, you said.
Yeah, the treasure will not be here this evening.
Okay.
We weren't sure when I added this in last Friday, and he's not going to make it tonight.
Okay. Road foreman's update. I guess, uh, the road foreman's properly out on the roads.
The road foreman's plowing, so. I'll do the road foreman's report.
So, Dave, can you, you're going to fill us in?
Yeah. We'll start off with, with the winter roads, the stone project we were working on that we postponed. We may need to go back to that. We, as you just saw, we've spent a lot of, on the salt in the last month. We have eighty-eight tons left in our storage over here, the tractor's at the back wall over here, so we have another load coming. I did discuss the stones with the town manager of Dorset and Arlington.
Maybe you ought to explain what we mean by stones.
Well, we're talking about little, little quarter inch, half an inch stone that are spread out like sand would be spread out on the road. The idea is that as they're on the road, as they heat, they melt in, and they give especially cars a greater traction than they would get with just sand, which kind of dissipates into the snow and the salt. There's even questions what the salt, because we mix a little salt in with the sand, it may not be the best thing for the roads as it goes through the season. Dorset uses no salt. They only use these small stones. Arlington only uses the small stones on their dirt roads. If you go through Dorset and, and the roads in Arlington, you'll find that the stones always come back up through the snow, they're always on the top. I've gotten very, very positive responses from a lot of people in Shafter's, especially with cars, how they're getting better traction when the stones are on the road. We did start this a little late. This is, the idea just was from Terry. I think it's an excellent idea, and it has worked in other towns. When they were first put down, we did have an ice problem that might have caused some of the problems. We heard from people that the stones were kicking up a little bit. I think speed caused some of the other problems. I had people come in and say they were trying to walk and a car would go flying by and they'd kind of get pelted with stones. And I think that's more a function of speed and not being courteous if you're passing walkers than, than anything else. Dorset and Arlington don't report such problems. I don't know if it's because they started earlier in the season. Arlington gets the stone from the same place we get at Daly's, so it's the same material. I did have a couple complaints about the larger size pickup tires. If you have an aggressive snow tire and you pick up, it does lock up some stone. You tend to dump it out when you hit a paved, paved road. You know, there's no, nobody reports anything with broken windshields. No one reports any, anybody claiming anything as far as damage when you're using these small stones. And these are small, like jagged stones. Like I said, it's not large stones. It's just to replace salt and sand. And it's worked effectively in other towns and other areas and up north, and I think it's something we have to look to as we get, look at the bills we have for, for salt. And we are just about out of salt. The salt budget's home. Pretty much the next two loads should take care of the salt budget for this year. And we'll still have the eighty-eight ton over here, but another weekend like this and we're going to go. They did husband the salt pretty closely this weekend, knowing that it was a continual snow event. They weren't just going out and spreading it all the time. But still, this is a, I think this is a good alternative that we, we need to get back to at some point, especially if we start running out of salt this year. It would be a good substitute for that. And next year we should definitely be looking at doing this from the beginning of the year. Maybe study a little bit more how they go about it, get it started in Dorset, in Arlington, and other towns, and start it right at the beginning. Like I said, for many of the car owners, I've gotten very, as the people call me after we stop, wondering why we stopped, because they liked it so much. So, you know, but there are the people with the bigger tires who were loading up with this, these loose stones. They're very small stones, but you hit pavement and you do dump the stone. And that's, that's true.
Peels, pebbles, pea stone, quarter inch or under?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, it's very, very small. They, they just.
More like half inch, right? It's bigger than the sand.
Yeah, yeah, and it, it just sinks in a little bit and, and, and even when you plow it, it's still come, it's still there.
Some of it's three quarters, I think.
The specification on it is minus three quarters. Three quarters is small.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a potential for some pretty good sized stuff.
There are, there are a few, because I went out on Holy Smoke, and you can find some that, that are a little bit bigger. They fall.
I don't know how the gradation is, because stone in the pilot tends to separate. Big stone can go to the bottom of the pilot. And depends where the load comes from and how it's mixed and all that. Terry asked me just to go up on Jumbo Hill to see what I thought of it, and I drove Jumbo Hill up to Holy Smoke and turned around and came back. And my tires are loaded. When I left here, I went to Venetian, and I think it's gone all the way to Venetian, and tires did not, I would go. So it can be a problem, I think, but I think overall the roads outweigh any negative.
Yeah. And I think just what you're saying, too, because I noticed that, too, and I noticed coming up East Road when we started. There were some patches that seemed a little thicker, and I have large snows on my suburban, too, and I can hear it hanging up underneath. And I was wondering, as was suggested by a few people, when he decided to start, whether it, there was like an ice coating on. If we had started earlier, that might have not, we wouldn't have had this kind of problem. And we could have gotten to the learning curve on the amount to put down. So we weren't putting too much down in some areas and, but yeah, you know, I could hear it hang up, too, as I was driving along.
But overall, I think the benefits outweigh.
Yeah.
Comments from the board? I think we should move from salt to the stones. We've exhausted our salt budget. There's already talk of shortages of salt. It's already going up in price. This seems like a good alternative. We've done a test. We've gotten mostly positive results. The, the potential, even, even in, you know, in the short term, we, we probably ought to move to it to preserve our salt for the paved roads. Long term, we could end up saving money year in, year out on salt. Our truck vehicles and everybody's vehicle in town is likely to see the benefits of not having salt on the roads and, and increase wear. You said that the guys in Dorset say that they've seen.
Well, the trucks last longer. They are trucks, because the, you're not giving corrosive salt in it, and the trucks last longer. It just, it makes that bigger difference, two more years out of a truck. And that's a lot of savings, right there alone. Actually, that was the part when their road foreman came and spoke to me for an hour. That convinced me more than anything else that it was a good idea to try. To get two more years out of a truck is, is a pretty part of savings, especially when you have six of them out here. And it's going to be a lot of money.
Or motion. Um, sure.
I guess I make a motion that we continue to, to expand the use of stone onto more of the dirt roads in Shafter's.
So we have a, we have a motion to expand the use of stones instead of sand on dirt roads in Shafter's, separated by Mitch. Race? Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero.
Yeah, we'll talk about this more at the next meeting. I want to talk to the guys in the garage. As you know, part of the agreement is that when we hit the end of the overtime budget, that we look at other ways of compensating for overtime. This storm certainly has put us over the overtime budget last week and this week, and the Christmas mud season, we already dug into it this year. So I'm going to have a conversation with, with the garage. We've already talked about this. There's alternatives in personnel policy, and then next week at the board, we'll decide, I'll be at the board and decide how we want to move from here. But it is right in there that the board can decide a different way to compensate other than overtime. It's generally accepted that once we max the overtime budget, we move in that direction, so.
You're going to talk to them, find out what their feelings are, please.
Yeah, I want to talk to, talk, talk to the crew, and then it's only next Monday we come back and we'll have alternatives and see what we're going to do. But this one, you know, last week was bad, and it's been snowing since Saturday, so.
I understand.
Most likely we're talking about comp time, right?
Comp time, yeah. I, I would prefer comp time to, to other methods, but we'll discuss with, with, I'd like to talk to the crew and see what their feelings are on it. The next one is our truck, which most people know, I think, that we have a brand new tandem that we sent to Viking Sives up here in Swanton to be worked on. The garage that was sent to, TBI, had a building fire, and our truck was damaged to a certain extent. We have told them, frankly, that we don't want our truck back. And their insurance carrier was delayed because of blizzards and other things. They were supposed to have, have arrived on Friday. Our justice was supposed to have arrived today. I've not heard from either of them yet. There's quite a debate over how damaged this truck actually is, whether this is cosmetic. The fire was in the roof of the building. The truck, along with two others, was parked inside the building. You can see from it that, you know, there's definitely different parts, plastics and things like that that are melted. There is a tremendous concern by our D O D Delory and, and most every mechanic I speak to about possible damage to the electronics, to the wiring, any plastic piece in it, so. We have another complication that you can see there, that we don't own that dump body or that plow frame. That still belongs to Viking Sives. We never took possession of it. Viking Sives started painting it, and I was like, hold it, you know, you understand we don't own that. You still own that. So we're having quite a go around over, over what's going to happen with the cab and chassis. Whether they'll go along with, with our position that we want a new truck is going to be debated by the insurance companies. I went to Dave Newell and said, you know, we need a little assistance here, because I'm sure they're not going to want to total this vehicle. And we need to come up with something. And more importantly, I would like the truck to come down to Delory's for the work, because if we have to take this truck, he's going to be the one fixing it for the next ten years. And we can't have this come up every time something goes wrong, whether it was the fire or was it something else, you know? So it's all a negotiation, and we'll, we'll see where it goes. Like having a car accident, whatever the insurance companies decide they're going to deal with it.
Yep.
So I'll keep you posted on that. Oh, and, and just a, a thank you to Delory also. They have provided a single axle dump for us that is off their lot. We don't even have a monetary figure. We're going to, they're going to take what we can get from the insurance for rental and, and whatever else we can have. And they've been great helping us fix it, and it's been a great help with the weather the last two weeks. And they're just doing that to help us out. They feel kind of bad that their truck is up there, even though they have nothing to do with it. This is another side I, uh, and we'll get to that later. We'll get to that outside later. Let's go to, uh, next thing we have is the bids for the garage, both of which are well under three thousand dollars. But we have, and this is for the VOSIA required work to bring the garage up to standards, and it has to be completed by March first. We received two proposals, one from Megawatts Electric for a total of, I'm sorry, two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And one from Myers Electric for twelve hundred dollars. And this is for, there's five basic things that VOSIA is requiring us to prepare in the garage, moving a breaker box. We're replacing the fan that's in the wall of the garage that's been there probably since the garage was built. It's not very efficient. We have to put up a carbon, a carbon dioxide detector, or is it monoxide?
Monoxide.
Monoxide, thank you. Which, it'll be interesting, because it'll probably go off a lot, but it's going to be put up to comply with VOSIA. Some safety lights and exit lights on the door and some minor wiring, so we have the two bids.
You were asking them to put in a new fan, too.
Yeah, the new fan. Now it's with the fan for the back to replace that thing, because it's been there forever. What were we asking for there? So we have the two proposals, like I said, both of under three thousand dollars, the lowest being Myers at twelve hundred. So the board can decide or I can just decide based on it being under three thousand dollars.
Do you feel they're both equal? I mean, they're both doing the same things?
Yes, I do, yes. Um, yeah, it's, it's the, it's all pretty straightforward work. This is, moving the box and the fan are the two biggest things. Putting up the light and, and the detector, the module isn't, isn't special. I left some things off that we want to do the garage later. There will be a separate later bid for electrical work in the garage, because we still have to maintain the building. But we have to replace sheet rock to also meet VOSIA standards, so to do other electrical work while we're giving that apart at this time of the year, it would be not very practical, so.
We're going to get the electrical and the sheet rock done by March second?
Yeah. The sheet rock is like four pieces, and, and the garage guys are going to do it if, if we'll stop snowing.
If it ever stops snowing, yeah.
And if it gets close, then, you know, we'll come in on a weekend and have some sheet rock done.
I mean, I've looked at both these estimates. It looks like there's a lot more detail in Megawatts versus Myers. And just material wise, I mean, it's, he, I mean, he's, I'm, I just think they have more detail and it looks better, actually. I'm more realistic. He's got all the material laid broken out versus, I don't, must have, either John's got the stuff at home or he's getting a discount because, or, I mean, he actually breaks it out, how many, what's his hourly rate, what each material costs. I personally think Megawatts is a better estimate.
That's the higher one.
The Megawatts is definitely a, a much more thorough estimate.
Make a motion. Make a motion.
Make a motion, Mitch.
Motion that we be, uh, allow Megawatts to do the garage electrical for a total of twenty-one fifty-nine if we need movers. If we don't, we'll get some discounts for not needing that material.
We have a motion that we choose Megawatt Electric to do the VOSIA required electrical. We have a motion that, uh, we choose Megawatt Electric to do the VOSIA required electrical work in the garage. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Art. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero.
I love mail in the morning and I can get that coming. Uh, that'll be it for the road forms, you know, it's work.
Alright.
I mean, they're obviously up for hours.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, hopefully they'll go home soon.
Have they been on the roads continuously for thirty-six days?
Uh, they were back out this morning at, at around five, uh, because school was canceled, so they decided not to come in at the normal four. They came in at five. They've been there all day. They're salting now because they're concerned about the temperature dropping. There's also sanding going on now, which will pick up again in the morning. Uh, they tried to cut back on the sanding and salting during the course of the weekend because it was snowing so quickly. Especially with the sand, it just gets snowed over and you're not getting anything out of it, uh.
I talked to Steve when I came in and he was headed home.
Oh, he was headed home, yeah.
He was fueling up his truck. Said he would head out early in the morning to touch up.
Yeah. Yeah.
We- weather forecast says about ten o'clock it should be.
It should stop and then they'll, they'll all be coming in.
Ten o'clock tonight?
Ten o'clock tonight.
Yeah, okay. But they did have a long weekend.
Alright. Uh, property purchase on, uh, North Road. Um, I think people have heard about this by now. There was, uh, I put something in the paper about it. Uh, but the, in a, in a nutshell, there are, uh, two small pieces of property, two quarter acre residential lots that were grandfathered into, uh, the industrial zone that includes, uh, Tam and Daley's and our landfill. Uh, one of those properties is for sale. We'd like to un-grandfather it and bring it into our landfill property. And, uh, tonight we have a, a contract, uh, to, uh, to do that. Uh, a sales contract that, uh, I've worked out with the, the real estate agent and the, uh, and the seller's attorney. Bring that up. Uh, the contract was a, a template provided by our attorney, uh, Rob Wilmington. Uh, this, the one that's been circulated shows, uh, where I filled in the blanks essentially, uh, with just the property description. And then, uh, uh, that part is in blue and then, uh, the seller's attorney has filled in a couple of things. Uh, they asked, they put into the property description that the transfer is in as-is condition. Uh, as I said in an email, I'm not sure why they did that, but then left in the conditions precedent to closing, which includes an inspection in thirty days to, to, to evaluate the inspection. But, uh, the main things, uh, that are in here that, uh, are important for the town buying it is a voter approval contingency that says the contract is void if the, uh, voters don't approve, uh, the budget at town meeting that includes the money to, uh, to, to finance it right now and the, uh, the Australian ballot, uh, vote to make the property purchase. And then, uh, the, uh, the real estate agent wanted to include a, uh, an attorney review contingency. So after this contract is signed by us, uh, it will then go to the seller to be signed. And then there's seven days for either side to, uh, have an attorney, uh, review it. So, uh, we'll have our attorney, Rob, uh, look it over again. But like I say, it's his boilerplate. There are just a couple of things that have changed in it.
Quick question. I mean, what's, what's the rush? Three weeks we would know whether we even need the purchaser voter approval contingency?
Um, the rush is the, the rush you have with any real estate. Somebody else could come in and buy it.
Um, is that really an issue?
Uh, I'm not aware of what, uh, what other traffic the, the property's getting, but we would like to have it, so I, I'm pushing that we, uh, we move to close a contract on it.
Sign a contract, it's a thousand dollars wrapped up and then we might, might not get it anyways if the town doesn't approve it. We can't purchase it anyways, but.
Right, we get a thousand dollars back if the town doesn't approve it.
And that even lessens the, uh, lessens the, uh, yeah, non-interest. But three weeks, we would know. We could take that number six right out of there. I don't know what the big rush is for this.
I don't know what the problem in going ahead and signing a contract is.
We can't, it, it's no, it's, you're signing nothing because we don't have a, authority to purchase that property without the, uh.
We're taking it off the market so that we can buy it for the three weeks it takes to get voter approval.
Mitch, I, my understanding is that the select board has the authority to enter into a contract upon the approval of the money. But the, this, this board has the authority to do that.
Yeah, a, a contract, but we can't purchase without the approval of it, so.
Tell you what, since we're gonna do this much discussion, I'm gonna move that we, uh, we sign the sales contract to purchase this property. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
So now let's, let's discuss the merits of the contract.
Okay, I just, I just don't understand. I don't know what the big rush is, number one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you have a contract signed, you can go to the voters and say, if you approve this, that's the price, that's the deal. You have a contract, you can move forward.
Yes, you don't.
If you don't have a s- contract signed, what you're doing is you're fishing. You're saying, approve forty thousand dollars and we'll try to make a deal with this guy. So all it does is it kind of aligns things up. You're right, in three weeks, you know, we're that close. But I think it's better for you to go to the voters saying, we have an agreement with these people. All we need is your approval, instead of saying to the voters, give us forty thousand dollars, we're gonna try to buy a piece of property.
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm not against the contract. I just don't understand the necess- necessity of it. That explains it a little bit, uh, to set stage and stage it, but, uh, I don't know the rush, but we've, we've got a contract. Um, what was I gonna say?
Any other comments?
No.
Couldn't before.
Well. I guess in, in, in order to line it up and make it known to the voting, what they're actually voting for. But this is strictly, you know, we have it in the, in the budget, we only allocated thirteen thousand for this year, correct?
Correct.
For the, for the next year.
Correct. Our intention is to finance it over three years.
Starting in twenty sixteen, are we gonna take a loan out? Cause the bu- budget we just did was twenty fifteen, sixty, or sixty, yeah, so.
Right. Right.
Um, I just don't know.
Uh, well, the contract says that, um, we're going to, um, pay them within thirty days of the vote. So, uh, I guess we'd have to work out the details of that, but I presume if we take out a loan for three years, we don't have to pay, uh, the first year's payments the day we get it. Uh, they'll be spread out over a year. I think we can, uh, we can manage, uh, three months' worth of payments until the, the full amount is budgeted in July. Do you have an objection to purchasing the property or just to entering into a contract to purchase the property?
A contract, I mean, um, I'll, I'll, I'll agree to sign the contract. I just don't know what the big rush is for. It's been sitting there for two years. We don't know where we're gonna get our money within thirty days. It just seems a little, uh, rushed and maybe I'm missing a reason for that. I mean, I.
Well, I think the reasons are that somebody else could buy it if we don't enter into a contract. And as David said, uh, we're, uh, we're entering into contract to purchase at a fixed price and that's what we're going to the voters with.
Thirty day, thirty days is off in short, you have lawyers together and everything else. You might wanna try to push that out to sixty or even ninety, but you're getting closer to the whistle.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty, I hate being in real estate on thirty, because it just never happens.
And, and this is an estate too, which is, makes it even.
Oh, they won't be ready for thirty days.
That's right.
So what do you want, a hundred and twenty days?
Well, a hundred and twenty days would put you into the next fiscal year, which means the money would be there if it was approved by the voters.
That, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Let them come back and say, no, we need it ninety instead of like twenty.
That's a, that's a. That's what, that's what this is all about, the negotiation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Um, I think that's a good point. Uh, I was probably optimistic thinking we would have a, uh, be ready to close on April third. What do you guys think?
I think thirty days is too quick.
Do you think sixty's enough?
One twenty?
No, I would extend it as far as you can go.
I would think that from, from hearing them that if, if the town agrees to buy it,
One twenty, till the finish is twenty.
As long as there's a contract and the voters approve it, that they would probably wait till the fiscal year starts.
Sure. Seven two.
I, I don't know that I wanna ask them to wait until July to close though.
Well, if it happens earlier.
If they signed up for a contract, I mean, you, you have letter of intent. We always have purchase agreements. Sometimes they can go six months or longer.
Thirty days of April, sixty is May, June, July, one twenty is July.
May.
True.
Ninety days is the first of June.
One twenty is July.
Well, we certainly wouldn't have a problem covering it for a month. I mean, you know, if they don't wanna do one twenty and wanna do ninety, we could certainly cover it for a month, but, you know.
But it could go earlier if they, everything is settled.
Absolutely. That's right. We aren't saying that's when it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay, what are you comfortable with? Uh.
Ninety.
Ninety, so make it June. March, April, May, June, June third, ninety days from the, uh, from the vote. Alright, uh. We just had a, uh, motion that was seconded to move, to, uh, change the, the closing date on the contract from three April to three June. All in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. So that amendment to the contract has been, uh, passed. Any more discussion on the contract? All in favor of signing the sales contract for the property at four ninety-two North Road as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? It's four zero zero. Alright, I will, uh, send this on to the, uh, to the seller. Thank you, Dave. That was probably, uh, a good, uh, good move there, giving us more time to work on that. Uh, this item here on the cross property, we're gonna discuss that in, uh, executive session. Uh, Newtown Garage Review of Proposals of, uh, this is just, uh, since we've been talking about the garage a lot lately. We even went so far as to ask Bernstein if, uh, if they would be willing to, uh, let us build a garage in their parking lot. I thought it would be a good idea to go back and look at some of these, um, spreadsheets that I did, uh, right after the last, uh, garage vote. Cause, uh, at the time I was feeling some urgency to try and figure out where to go from there. And, uh, at the time I was believing that, uh, the problem with the garage had been that it was too expensive. And, uh, by going back to the original, uh, estimates as much as I could find and then putting them into a spreadsheet and then playing with, um, you know, what could we cut in the garage uh, in order to make, uh, get it down to a price that was more palatable to the voters. And this would be the original, original, uh, quote, for a million and a half dollar garage that had seven truck bays, a maintenance bay, a pole barn and, uh, a big enough, uh, garage building that we had, uh, room for offices and meeting spaces and all of that, uh, long-term planning that went into that. And the, uh, the things that you're looking at here are, uh, where I've circled are the things that I'm gonna be changing in the, in the subsequent, uh, uh, subsequent slides. But the main thing I'm, uh, that happened, uh, I'll go ahead and go to the next one is, well, what happened when we go to the next one is that, uh, uh, we got rid of the pole barn. We got rid of some of the garage bays. And then, uh, event, we eliminated some of the size of the building, particularly having room for extra meeting space. And, uh, we convinced ourselves we could, uh, build a salt shed for less than two twenty-five. And so the, uh, the proposal that, uh, we went to the voters the second time with was a, uh, a six gate bay garage with no, uh, no maintenance bay, uh, no pole barn, uh, no extra space in the building for, uh, for meetings and a, uh, a salt shed. In the garage committee, we, we've, we convinced ourselves that a hundred and fifty thousand was just the cheapest that we could build a usable salt shed. And that got us down to the, uh, to that, you know, little less than a million, uh, proposal that we, they, we went forward with before. Now, these numbers are not, not exact, but these are the ones, this is kinda how you can visualize it in, in this, in this spreadsheet. And then, uh, so that went down and I thought, well, can we, does it make any sense to build anything any smaller? And there are, uh, a couple of options here. If you, uh, this one doesn't really get you any cheaper, but, uh, I know that there's some, some questions, uh, that we've asked is, did we make a good move when we got rid of the maintenance bay? Uh, given that we've got all this equipment and we've got, uh, some really good mechanics on, on duty, uh, uh, does that make sense? And to, uh, to stay under a million dollars, we're down to a, a five bay garage. But the maintenance bay is, is, uh, estimated at being quite a bit more expensive. And I, I don't know exactly what that is, but, uh, in the s- the way it was, uh, specked out in the original estimate, the maintenance bay was priced at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot compared to seventy-five dollars a square foot for a regular truck bay. And I presume that was their way of comp, accounting for cost, uh, like, uh, I don't know, like you have to have a crane and air compressors and, you know, other things in there.
And fire alarm and, mm-hmm.
Yeah, fireworks, yeah.
Welders.
Welders and all those things that you need in a maintenance bay. So, you know, if you wanna add a maintenance bay and, uh, uh, stay under a million dollars, uh, at least with these estimates, you're looking at a four, four truck bays then plus the maintenance bay. That would be our four plow trucks that we could load up, uh, with salt and sand the night before and have them ready to hit the, hit the streets in the morning.
You wouldn't think they'd be putting a pit. Pits aren't allowed in the.
I don't know if they're not allowed, but they're not a good idea.
No.
Just because of, from fumes and drainage and things like that. I don't think a pit would be a good idea.
An accident. So I'm, I guess the reason I'm asking that is why, why is a repair base so much more money?
I'm not sure if there, you could, you could make a bunk for perhaps a heavier duty floor, but I don't think that's gonna be a, a necessary thing.
I, I just don't understand it because the welder, we, we, we got.
If, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have an overhead crane, you're gonna build support for that. I think that that might be a, a very nice option, but not, you know, that's one of those nice to have, but maybe not necessary. Some kind of a gantry, some kind of a portable overshot, one down and they bring it, something like that. We never had anything like that down in Daley's, other than the gantry or the loaders come in. If, if their engineering side lost to support an overhead crane, I can see the cost.
Okay, that's.
Other than that, you're, you're looking at ventilation and electrical stuff off of source and fumes and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay.
Of radiation from welding.
No, that would have to be fire, that would have to be a full wall, full.
That could be a curtain.
Could be. Could be.
You have to shield, I mean, there's all kinds of ways of doing it, but if you're just simply trying to control the ventilation in that space, that could be a curtain. And same thing, that would prevent arc flash.
I thought, I thought there was something in there about the fireproof walls. I, I, if we use, we're gonna use one of the bays as a maintenance bay. Without having a maintenance bay, it would, I thought we had to have a special wall around it so private fireproof.
I may be wrong. Code bay required. I know Pitts House Garage has it at all. It does. I know Pitts House Garage has it at all, it does go all the way to the ceiling.
Mm-hmm.
It's the interior concrete block wall.
That's, I, I thought that was one of the discussions I saw.
But, but a firewall is just double sheetrock with special caulking and that sort of stuff, too?
Yeah, I would recommend concrete, uh, four feet, but then, yeah, fireproof sheet double, double, by the fireproof sheet back and take care of the fire.
Yeah.
So with the four feet, you can't.
So I don't know why it's more either, so. Mm-hmm.
Both more per square foot and, uh, in the original estimate, it was, uh, significantly bigger. Um, in the second estimate, I shortened it to the same, uh, length as the other bays, uh, it's still wider, so that there's room to work around the, the vehicle that you put in there. But one of the things that we did with the, the, when we moved from the first estimate, or the first garage proposal to the second one was, the building became a pure rectangle, it didn't have any sticky outty parts, cause, uh, uh, that does, uh, that does cost more. Then it was, we were really gearing, uh, those discussions toward the, uh, the recently built, uh, garage in Swanton, which was a six-bay garage that they, they built the building itself, uh, I believe it was around six hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, with the estimates I have here, I've got it coming in at, uh, a little more than five hundred thousand dollars, but again, this is ballpark stuff here.
Sure. Is, is the seventy thousand for the driveway in any of this or not?
Uh, in this, there is fifty thousand for, uh, site work and road.
Site work. Okay.
Uh, and that was the way it was in, um, this set of numbers that I had, um. And then, probably another set of numbers or maybe just things people told me, it was, uh, the seventy thousand dollar number, uh. But, uh, here we're looking at a total of fifty thousand for whatever site work is required on the site, uh, plus whatever road work is, is, is needed.
I think our site's gonna be a big factor in whether.
Sure.
You know, we're just talking hypothetical, I mean, if, if we can nail down a site, then that would be a lot easier. You know, I, I'm not saying, for instance, Bernstein would be a lot cheaper than, than the original part and, and the, uh, the landfill, and the property we're acquiring around the landfill would be like halfway between.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Site work and all that sort of stuff, so.
Right, right. Yeah, but if you believe these numbers, the, the difference between the sites is, you know, gonna be
But I, I.
something between zero and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, that's right, yeah, so. I still think something like, like a proposal like this with the maintenance bay
Yeah.
in, in there is, is what we've gotta look at and, and start fine tuning it, finding out why they've got so much built into it and that sort of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I like the, I like the maintenance bay, it doesn't make sense to have a new garage without a maintenance bay. Yeah.
And, and I don't know if every truck has to be in, in, in at night and all that sort of stuff, too, so.
Yeah.
We, we found good places for the graders, the graders, I mean, as of right now, graders are parked at Bernstein and everybody seems to be happy, so we don't have to go building, buildings for them to be parked in, all that sort of stuff, is that, is that right?
Right, right, the original, uh, one and a half million dollar proposal had a, a pole barn for parking them under, uh. Presumably, uh, the site we get will, will be big enough to, to park them there and we won't have them to be, uh, uh, borrowing, uh, land over Bernstein's to do it, but, uh, they'll be setting out, uh. Yeah, none of the one, none of the proposals I have here, uh, includes any of the, the coal storage space, the pole barn.
Were, were these all steel buildings or were they pole buildings?
This was all with, uh, stick construction.
With stick?
Yeah.
Keep, oh.
Yeah, um, we've gone, we've gone round and round on that many times, uh, and, uh, it always sounds like you ought to be able to come in with a prefab steer, uh, steel building, but, uh, we've decided several times, including the second garage committee round, that, uh, stick construction is, is the way to go. At least at that time, and it's been a year, um, we would have been looking at, um, so much retrofitting of a steel building to make, uh, make it fit the new energy codes, that it wouldn't, uh, have been cost effective.
A, a friend of mine builds pole buildings and he says that a pole building, you could insulate, put a lot more insulation into it than you can a steel building. And if efficiency is what we're looking at, I think it's important to consider that.
Mm-hmm. And I think the, uh, steel buildings are only guaranteed for twenty-five years or something and we're looking for a sixty to seventy-year life out of this new barn is what we've been, what we talked about earlier on too. I mean, stick built, it could be six.
I, I think there's a difference between a pole building and a stick building and a steel building.
Stick building.
I think there's three different things to look at. A pole building is where they actually use poles as a structure as opposed to a lot of concrete walls and all that sort of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Like a pole barn.
Pole barn.
Yeah, yeah, my understanding of the pole barn was really just, um, keep the snow off of stuff. An uninsulated coal storage building.
What you do is you take the pole barn and then you add your, add your siding to it with, with lots of insulation and all that sort of stuff. I don't know that much about it, but I, I'd like to get some di- different people to come in and talk to us about it, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Some engineers, all right?
Uh, if we, uh, eliminate the the maintenance bay, uh, we can get something down to, uh, essentially seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, which is what this, this one suggests. And that's just, you know, the four, four plow trucks, uh, get to stay inside at night, when, you know, we can, like I say, uh, fill them up with sand and salt and keep them inside and then be ready to go in the morning, and that's, that's all we got, and then if one of them needs repair, one of them sets out.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Uh, and then, uh, I know some people would have liked to seen us build a garage for half a million dollars. Um, using this set of numbers, we get two garage bays for that, so I guess we, we draw straws every night to see which, which ones go in. Or if one of them's being worked on, uh, there's only one lucky truck that gets to sit inside at night and, uh, I just can't see that it makes any sense to, uh, to, to try and go that low.
Too much money invested in the trucks to do that.
Yeah.
I agree.
We've got three here, don't we?
Yeah, I.
We have three bays here, don't we?
Four.
Four?
Four.
So, yeah, one.
But one doesn't fit up.
Yeah.
A big truck.
Yeah.
I, I think if we s- get s- get some people in there to understand buildings and kinda at least look towards the, the four and one.
Mm-hmm.
That, that would be my vote, my opinion.
Yeah, but I think what this tells me is that we're still in the neighborhood of a million dollars.
Could, could be.
Yeah, it's not gonna get cheaper.
But, you know, if we really put a fine, a fine pencil to it, uh, you know, and, and these are, are real generic numbers, but if we, you know, if we get better estimates, uh, we might be able to do that, uh. Keep in mind, we'll have to pay for those estimates, uh. So, uh, as I say, it seems like, uh, the right answer is around a million dollars with, uh, four loaded plow trucks, ready to roll in the morning and a maintenance bay, uh, is, to me, what seems to make sense, we're still, we're still at those numbers. Uh, I don't think it, it, I think it would be silly to try and build a two-bay garage to get down to a half a million dollars, I just don't think we can build a garage for half a million dollars. Um, and we're not likely to, uh, put this to the voters again until March of twenty sixteen, there's no, uh, November election this year. And, uh, by July of twenty sixteen, assuming that we continue to contribute to the garage reserve the way we have, uh, by the summer of that year, we'll have, uh, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that garage reserved. So, if you built a million dollar garage in, uh, FY seventeen, uh, we'd be going to the voters for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Cool.
All right, that's, that's that. And Dave, we're back to you, town administrator.
Okay. The, uh, around the block sidewalk, the Trevor's Corner over here is the last segment to go. Uh, the last problems with the permits, I've been on the phone with the state and KAS, and we're ironing out the last right-of-way review, uh, and hopefully that'll be done within a couple of weeks. And we all have it to bid by March and we're still targeted for the summer, uh, KAS and the state are still, uh, uh, fine that we'll be able to get it done this summer. But there were a number of, of problems that led up to this, uh, KAS had a turnover, uh, the state had two turnovers and then a replacement became ill and, uh, many things fell behind, uh. But they're catching up now and, and we expect to have this final right-of-way. The eleven-eleven reviewer permit will be issued and, and we'll be ready to start the actual construction plans and, uh, get to bid. The important thing is we wanna go to bid soon, you know, March, no later than April, so we can get this thing scheduled out for July and August, which would be the op- you know, the optimum time for this construction to be going on. We don't want it going on in the, in before June and we don't want it going on after August. Uh, because it is the one corner where the kids cross, which is the whole point of doing it, so, uh, you know, we're, we're pushing for that timeline and we're hoping everything gets done. Once we get out of this little, uh, loop or in, in Montpelier over this right-of-way and people wanting to review it all the time, uh, I think it'll go fairly quickly. There's many diagrams on this already, there's lots of engineering planning that's got into this already, so, I would think KAS will be able to turn this around fairly rapidly and, uh, uh, get, get it out to bid. So I think we're, we're good with it, uh, financially, it's all fine, I was just doing bills with them over the last week too, just bringing everything up to date and, uh, uh, everything, everything's on target. It doesn't seem that way, but it's been a really long time, but.
Yeah.
But actually, the original plan, I came across it this morning, uh, the original timeline had to be completed by, uh, the fall of this year. So, you know, it's, it seems like a very long time, even when I've been going back to the years and boxes of documents on this project, it seems like it's been going on for a long time, but.
Yeah, well, and we had some turnover here.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah.
And town administrator that, you know, it, it slipped off several of our radars during that time.
Yeah, things, you know, just change and delays here and turnover and, uh, but I, everyone's on, on target for this year.
Have you heard? Have you heard anything specific about the, uh, the, the safety lighting, the crosswalk lighting, uh?
It's all rolled into this, this program and it's, it's already partially in some of the diagrams, uh. The last year, in December of thirteen, they combined the original grant with the secondary grant that was received, so now it's, it's, now it's in one project, uh, which is one of the things I was going over with them, cause we used to file for each grant, now it's combined grants and so, what base numbers are we looking at now? You know, do I have to find out what part of the engineering was done for the emergency lighting and which part was done for the construction, so, uh, but that'll be, we'll get into specifics of that when we actually get into the building stage. But on the diagram, you can see where the warning flasher is, uh, I'm not sure the status of there was a, there was someone who was talking about a radar sign.
Radar speed feedback, yeah, that was something we wanted and I know that when I last talked to the state about that, they were still, it's been a year, uh,
Yeah.
they were still establishing rules for when they would allow people to have those, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if they've approved one.
Yeah.
So I was wondering if, you know, things like that have been approved by.
Uh, that hasn't come up specifically, I've been reading about it and I know from past experience that they can be problematic, but, uh, um, if it's possible and it's within the budget, we could, we can get it in there. But the flashing lights are in there and the s- school speed zone.
Yeah, it's in the budget, uh, the only question was, uh, were we gonna run into permit problems and
Yeah.
it sounds like that's
This.
not the permit that's hanging aside.
Yeah, no, that's not the permit that this is, this, this is, they do with the state's right-of-way and someone wanting to, to review it again, and then it has to go to the permit specialist, which is where it's at now. And then KAS should get it back and we should just be done. And then we can get into the design, uh, not the construction design, it's, it's pretty much design, but then we have to get into the construction design, so it can go out to bid. And then, what, once it's bid, like I said, if it's, if it's bid out by mid-April, we should be, we should be good. And so we're trying to keep the heat on now to, uh, to keep that going, cause that really is kind of important.
Good, thank you.
Uh, the next thing is there's the, uh, sick time accrual. A few months ago, as you remember, we changed the vacation time to be in the fiscal year and it would give you vacation time at the beginning of the year. Uh, for clarity with pay data, especially the company that, that does our payroll and, uh, does all these things, we'd like to switch the sick time to parallel that. So that everyone would be running on the fiscal year for their sick time and personal days. Uh, and you'd be credited at the beginning of the year and we'd work them off. Uh, according to the personnel policy, you can only accrue twenty-four at any one time. So you would have your twelve sick days, sick slash personal days is the way it is in our personnel file. Uh, so if you carry over twelve from say this year on July first, you'd get twelve more, so you'd have a maximum of twenty-four at any one time. Uh, instead of this, there's a very complicated procedure for adding an hour on each pay period and everything.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just, twenty-four is, like I said, is the maximum, so that the guys could always keep twenty-four. We were just having a discussion on this about what a personal day or a sick day means. Cause I was trying to tell them that, well, you know, a personal day in the personnel policy, you're supposed to take it for like five specific things, which can be just to get a child or the doctor or whatever, which is, which is all fine, but, uh, to take it because you've been working a lot, uh, isn't really one of them, and also, this is sick time, if you fall at home and break your arm, it's the only way you're really gonna get compensated, uh, unless you're going on disability, on the private disability thing, so. Uh, I'm gonna work on the wording of that section, because sick slash person, a personal day i- is not anything I've ever worked on before and I think it, it needs to be clarified what we're talking about here and very specific about what it can be used for. It's not for like taking a day off and it has to be clear that, you know, you don't want to be using these days, because I've had it happen to, to myself where I broke my arm and because of what I used to do, I couldn't go to work for eight weeks and I broke it off duty and, you know, it was nice to have sick time around, you know, it can, can happen just like that, so. Uh, we'll have some discussion on that and then I'll bring that, that change up, up to the board again and we'll, uh, uh, we'll discuss it and if you wanna approve it, we'll, we'll switch that. But the, the bigger thing is getting vacation and sick time on the same schedule, cause it's kinda driving pay data crazy as we're accruing at different times of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah.
It's gonna stink.
Yeah, and right now, right now, you, you accrue like eight, two hours this week and two, and it's, it's kind of a, a nightmare to keep track of.
Exactly. As long as you have a good accountant, it's fine.
Yeah, 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 and, and, you know, well, we had to tell everybody, cause, uh, pay data gave everyone a lot of time off last pay period, like, whoa, don't, ignore that whole part of your paycheck.
So they can only accrue up to twenty-four days, twenty-four.
Twenty-four days.
And then, so then in the third year.
You lose, i- if you don't use any in twelve, and none in thirteen, at the beginning of fourteen, you lose your twelve days. Your two thousand twelve days, you'd still have twenty-four, but one year always drops off at the end.
So, yeah.
And at retirement, there's, there's no payout, this town has no payout, so, uh, like, and I think, I forget what town it was, but one town we're just looking into, they have this bank they have to pay, they owe these people all these sick, well, we don't have that, so we don't have, don't have to be concerned about that.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, but it, it is something that they need to keep in mind, uh, you need this time, it's really not much, twenty-four isn't much if you get sick or anything, it can go pretty quickly.
No, no.
The next thing I don't have an update on, uh, Jerry Madison brought this to my attention, the select board, all select board members and, and myself have to take ICS one hundred and seven hundred. That can easily be taken online, it's not in very long, two courses. Uh, he was gonna, we were waiting for something to come from, uh, I forget the name, but, but from, from the state and we haven't received it yet. Uh, but you can find those on FEMA and I'll get that to you as soon as she sends us the little brochure. The, uh, two hundred and four oh two training, which apparently is required too, I'm not even sure what they are, uh, but they will be, uh, you have to attend those, I believe Jerry was trying to get, get it done at the firehouse here. And again, we haven't gotten the update from the state on that, so I'll just have to keep you posted on those. The online one doesn't take long, I took them, but mine expired, so I have to take them, apparently. The online one doesn't take long. I took them, but mine expired, so I have to take them apparently, so it's, it's not that, that big of a deal. Uh, the other big issue is our methane monitoring. Uh, during the January methane monitoring test at landfill, um, I got all zeros and got all zeros at the vent pipe too. Uh, I brought it back and attached the monitor to the methane tank and got zeros there also.
Yeah.
Uh, so the monitor has gone kaput. Uh, the monitor also is no longer manufactured. And the company that did make it uh won't service this one. Uh, they haven't calibrated it either. So what I've done is I notified the state right away. Uh, the state gave us a waiver for January because we were trying desperately to get one. Uh, finding that mine one is kind of complicated. Uh, and I've arranged for KAS to do uh the February test, because we just don't, it just has to be done. Uh, they're gonna do it for four hundred dollars, uh and provide some guidance on it. Uh, I'm kind of viewing it as I was looking to get a new baseline anyway, so we'll have a new baseline in February. And by March, uh hopefully by the time KAS gets here in a couple of weeks, I'll have a new monitor and maybe I can convince them to uh give me a hand. The simple monitor we had was great, because it just did methane. Uh, most monitors I'm coming across do a wide variety of things. So, you know, I'm still kind of looking for something, just monitor my methane and not uh there's no, there's no cause to think anything else is, is going on there. It's just uh, the, the monitor we had was old and it, that was it, it just gave out. But the state is, is fine with it being delayed, uh skipped in January and uh, well, KAS did it for February and we'll be back on track with it again.
Okay, good.
And the last thing I have was the lease from next door, Dennis McCarthy's uh lease. Now, this is my mistake and we can pick this up again next week. I didn't send any of you a copy of the lease to look at before this meeting. This was the addendum, the assignment of lease agreement. I mean, we signed the lease agreement uh with Dennis, but this is the assignment of lease to the new owners there. Uh, which was requested by uh Dennis's attorney when we were doing this one. So the new property owner who we talked to and everything, he's come over and signed his. Uh, so I'll send this to the board, so it can go out to everybody. We can just sign this next week if, if you're willing to do it. But basically, it's just agreeing that what we signed with Dennis will allow him to pay the, the same time. So, it's pretty straightforward.
Sold.
Yeah, I've sold. The new ma- the new gentleman's in there. Uh, they do uh, it's Wolf Creek Properties. It's a man and his wife. Uh, they own a number of properties in Vermont. Uh, they have a house in Ludlow and they own properties, Man estate, and they just fix them up and make investments in them. Uh, you know, they're, they're boarding, uh, they're coming to retirement and uh this is what they intend to do during their retirement, so. Uh, he's not changing anything. Doesn't, you know, he's very happy with the way the place is and uh, this is more procedural than anything else, but I forgot to send, put it in the pack for a little bit.
Okay.
So we'll just pick it up on, on Monday, on next Monday, cause we'll be back.
Yep.
And that is uh, that's for now.
Okay. Any other business? Uh, review of action items. I don't, I didn't write any down. Jen, what did we decide to do tonight? I don't think we had anything except probably lots of things that David has on his to-do list. But I don't think there was anything-
I, I was gonna try to get a list of uh possible people that had water rights to the cold spring.
Okay.
Just knowing the people around there, okay?
Alright.
And I was gonna follow up with Bernstein too and see where we are with if there's still any interest on, on their part and uh uh, I'm gonna check the, the state rules on the landfill. Cause as we were talking about uh that property, I wonder if there's any restriction on what we can do there.
I have a question on the, on the water rights. I mean, is it, if the town invests money in this cold springs and create a whatever, is it, uh, would the how does that affect water rights? I mean, would the towns taking over it, basically taking over the source?
That's my s- that's my concern. That's my concern.
Yeah, so I, I, that's, I'd like, I'd like to know.
Well, we own the source now. It's in, we own the source now. It's in our right of way.
In a way, that's right, but everybody has a, has a right to it.
Right.
Everybody who deeded right of way has a, has a, a right to that water, so, that sort of stuff. It, you know, it's just, um-
Yeah, I mean, there may, there may be legal questions that come up, particularly if we decide we wanna, you know, the thing that we wanna put there encroaches onto the the Hamilton property, but certainly it's, our intention is to not change anybody's water rights.
Again, I'm, I'm quite excited about it, but there is that, water rights are very important. At least years ago, they were extremely important.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm sure there'll be a, there'll be a lot of uh, uh sticking points along the way. Probably the biggest one uh would be, you know, trying to get permission to have a, a fountain there that the public can drink out of.
I don't think that'll happen.
Uh, tough. It'll be tough, but I'm not giving up until I get beaten down. Cause I think it would be great. It's uh, part of the history there is drinking that water. We should be allowed to drink it. My granddaddy drank that water. Alright, uh, if nothing else, then uh I move we go into executive session to discuss real estate.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Can I just ask, are you gonna do interviews for the DRB or what's the situation? I, I'm sorry, I missed the-
Yeah, the situation is we have uh until the sixteenth, until next week, uh to receive letters of support and then we'll do interviews next week. There's, there's no new ones other than
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's all the same.
Yeah, the uh, the, the DRB, uh it's the same people. Planning commission, there are two vacancies that we don't have any body rates in our hands for.